All right, so we're gonna call the order of the Nottingham Select Board for Tuesday, February 20th, 2004 at 6:30. We start with this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My first order of business is to approve the manifest and payroll. Has everybody read it? Was there any questions or concerns?
No. I make a motion to approve manifests from February 20th, 2024, and payroll of February 20th, 2024.
We have a second. Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Masrul.
Everybody read the minutes from February 5th, 2024? Was there any changes or things noted?
I see the changes that were made since they were sent with Alan. The spelling of Alan's last name were in this one. They were the ones I originally got.
Yeah, there was a couple of suggested highlights throughout. Alan Trant instead of Trent, found on page two, line item 54 and 58. Line 136 on page four, Owen Friend Gray. Line 138, Town of Nottingham, Town of NOM.
I think line 142, the end of 139 to 40, I'm not sure what that's supposed to mean. It was previously involved in reading the budget. I think it should just say he sits in the Budget Committee.
What line was that?
139 into 140.
Does it even need to say that? Should we strike the whole sentence?
Yeah.
He said he sits on the Budget Committee. I think I watched it from TV. You could strike from the "and" on.
So line 139, remove "and" was previously involved in reading the budget.
Yeah.
He was just saying that he read the budget at the deliberative session. That's what Owen did. So it was previously involved.
I was referring so that people would know who he was.
That's what it was.
It was more just to say, put the name with face. Like, this is who you were. Because sometimes that's easier for people to relate.
So maybe he read the budget at the deliberative session.
That's why I determined by that.
Okay.
Anybody have any other things, any others that need to be addressed? As I said, are we okay to go for a vote?
Line item 203, Vilchok was misspelled.
Name correction.
And 207, the school, which need to be looked into, just past tense.
Take motion to approve the minutes as changed?
I make the motion to approve the minutes as changed.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Masrul, I'm seeing.
Reports of boards and committees. We know there's nothing for budget. I take it.
We had one last little meeting last week.
Oh, you did? Okay. What was that about?
Just to go over the school budget, since there was a change at the school deliberative. So we met to vote on whether or not the budget committee approves, and the Budget Committee did not vote to approve the school budget for 2024, '25.
Was that the change because of the fact that they added the $40,000 extra for the error or something like that?
Correct.
Planning Board, we had a meeting last week. The plans for the 25-lot subdivision off Smoke Street is in the final stages. They did get approval from the board. There are some conditions that they have to meet, but that should be a go-ahead for a new subdivision in town. There's also a second subdivision that was on the agenda that night for looking to get to the next stage, was the Falzone subdivision, and that is off 156, right across from where we'd see the Nottingham Santa Gravel there, and that will be a 17-lot subdivision proposed again by Joe Falzone, who's done many developments in town. So the approval for the, well, there's gonna be a site walk that's coming up on Saturday, March 9th, I believe it's a Saturday, for anybody in the public who wants to attend to see. It's open to the public. There is a tentative snow date for the 16th, for the week after, for again on Saturday, and it's at 10 o'clock. So again, that would be another 17-lot subdivision. But we are still looking for two members of the board that nobody signed up for, for election. So there's two seats available for three years on planning, if anybody wants to sign up, if you feel it's the right thing to do.
And you'd only have to take one year.
There's two people signed up for the one-year term.
Right, but if you step, because now submissions for the ballot are already due.
Right, but somebody could do a write-in campaign if they wanted to and say, write me in and get 25 votes, and they might become the next member.
John, on Smoke Street, how many units?
Smoke Street is 25. It's two roads, but one development. And that is being done by Oak Ridge Builders. So that's it for the Planning Board. CIP, I take?
Nothing.
Morrison?
Nope.
When would the project, do you know when the, I just actually drove by that the other day? Will the dugouts be, when spring comes, will the dugouts be all finished and ready to go?
Yeah, we were hoping to put the roofs on two weeks ago, but it was very windy, and it's pieces of steel that you've got to lift up on top, so we opted to not do that.
It just looked, because they're just raw wood sitting out there with the winter, so I didn't know.
Well, yeah, I mean, even if they were done, we couldn't have sealed them before, because the weather was too cold by the time we got the wood up.
I'm sure people are just excited to see it get completed.
So I think, we're thinking March. If it's in March, we'll get them up.
Oh, another question, too. Come springtime, will the, are the signs gonna stay up permanently? Sorry, I'm just asking questions because I have you here. This is the time to speak it.
It says, keep off the grass. Is that gonna be for when there is no activity? No, those should be taken down. Those were up for when the seal, last year when it was planted.
Yeah, just noticed that they were still there, so I didn't know if that would be for people that wanted to go out there. Because I know there's a trooper that likes to go play in that back area with his dog, so. Now we'll move on to the Town Administrator's Report.
Ellen? I have two action items that I'm looking for motions on. The first one is a petition for license utility pools along Dolof Dam and Lamprey. There's a total of six. It's been reviewed by the Highway Director. He signed off on it, so the next process in the approval would be for you to...
Are these?
Dolof Dam and Lamprey.
You know, I've driven down the road 100,000, I mean, I can't even tell you how many times I've driven down the road, but, Steve, is there poles on the road already, on that part where Fort Spitzner House? Or are they in the woods coming in? How's the power to get to all the houses that are on that part of the road?
That part of Dolof actually puts out poles from across the lake, from the, not across the lake, but from, over on the Lamprey side.
Oh, it crosses over the dam?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're talking about poles within the?
These poles are gonna be, when you go on Dolof Dam Road, you're going, you come off 126, you go on Dolof Dam Road, where Dolof Dam Road goes up, and then the new, it used to be Lamprey Drive Split, right? Kevin Best is building the house up there. Right before there, you have the lots, all the big lots that are on the right-hand side. The poles are gonna start there, from what the map looked like.
So the poles have got to be continuing from the houses that are at the beginning of Lamprey and then to connect to the new?
That's going up over? Just wanted to be clear with where, you know, the map, could have had a better map of the area than what they provided for us, so I just wanted to be clear on the subject of where they're going.
Yes. Yep, there's a statute that requires the selectmen to sign off on them before any utility is placed.
So I make a motion to accept the?
Petition for license?
Yeah.
We have a motion of the acceptance of the new poles for to be put on Lamprey Drive?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Masrul.
And they did actually give a timeframe and everything inside here for that, you know.
The second item is the annual map maintenance proposal and contract with CIA Technologies. They handle all of our tax maps, updates, both in paper format and online. The contract amount is $3,800. This has been included in the proposed operating budget. It's a, like I said, an annual contract for the map maintenance. So as long as the operating budget passes as proposed, then we should have no issue.
It's been in there, so it can be in default.
Correct. I think it, I think there was a $200 increase over what the fee was charged in 2023. Let's say it was $3,600, off the top of my head, last year, so, much like everything.
So we signed a new contract every year with them?
Correct. Yep. So the tax year starts April 1st, so the map maintenance will take place for any of those changes to reflect any subdivisions, new subdivisions or lot mergers.
I make a motion to approve the contract with CIA Technologies for the $3,800 for annual tax map maintenance.
I second.
Clear. We have a motion in a second for the approval. All in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Masrul.
The next item, New Hampshire DOT is going to be holding a public meeting on March 14th at 1:30 at the DOT Room 112, 113, located at 7 Hazen Drive, to discuss the proposed project. This is on Nottingham Project 40612, and this is going to be a preliminary meeting. They are going to hold another public hearing in Nottingham. I think that they, they heard that there obviously wasn't a lot of public attendance, the public hearings that they held in 2020 and 2021, and there are still some concerns that have been expressed. So that meeting will be held, and then we are having, they're gonna host a public hearing here in this room on March 20th. I believe the time is scheduled for 7 o'clock. I'm just waiting on the definite for that, but we'll get that posted. So there will be an additional public hearing to receive public comment and input on the bridge replacement.
On 152?
On 152, correct.
By the school?
Yes.
The sentence, the intent is not to take testimony, but rather to plan for the public hearing?
To plan for the public hearing, exactly.
So they just?
So this is their preliminary meeting prior to the actual public hearing, where they will take public input. So the one at DOT is just preparations for the public hearing.
And they were just here?
For an informational meeting.
For an informational meeting, like a month ago.
Yeah.
And proposing the bridge to be done in a rapid construction of 30 days. That means 152 gets closed completely for one day, and they said they'll rewrite them, they'll do it around the backside for Priest Road, but they'll have all their signs marked at the beginning of 156, 152.
They say 90 days.
30 days.
They would be working for the longer period of time, but the road would be closed.
And the reason why they said, this is a quick recap of what the whole conversation was, if you weren't there, was for the fact that due to the vast area of marshland or, you know, wellands around there, you can't really just move the road over and build a new bridge and set the main bridge, then go back to the bridge. It's just not feasible. Too much environmental impact is what they're going, is their major reason to do 30 days. Police Chief has expressed her concerns about not liking it, very vocally, of the 30-day. And the other project would be, again, they don't feel like there's any other way to do it besides a 30-day. And this bridge has been red-listed since 2012, so it's well over 10 years, and they just recently did this same project in Deerfield, I believe it was on 107. Again, I double-checked that, but they did a 30-day, and everything went pretty smooth. So that's what they're gonna be pushing for.
Will they allow public comment on the committee?
I presume so.
It is scheduled as a public hearing. It is scheduled as a public hearing on the 20th.
So, edits in a nutshell. We'll see what happens on that.
So I will be posting notice as soon as I get more. I'll get, I just received this one today, so I'll get this one posted, and then the follow-up for the 20th.
We list that on our website?
What's that?
We have that listed on the website.
Yes, that's where I'll get it posted.
Thank you.
Just for disclosure, some employment opportunities in the town of Nottingham. We're advertising for an administrative assistant assessing coordinator. That position was vacated by Kelly Delair. Her last day was February 9th. We also have an opening in the Highway Department for a heavy equipment operator, CDL Truck Driver/Laborer. That's one position. The Fire Department is still advertising for firefighter EMS. The Police Department is looking for full-time police officer, and we are also looking for a solid waste facility principal operator, since the recycling center has been branched off of the, we've pretty much eliminated the Public Works. Now, the recycling center is on its own, so we're looking for some supervisory over there. You have a 7 o'clock appointment. I just gave you some additional information on that. And as far as?
Are we still, oh, we have, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Nope.
Okay. As far as the policies review update that was tabled last week, I'm still waiting for Primex to complete their review of the safety manual, so I don't have any updates on that. And then I listened to the meeting last week, not last week, from two weeks ago. I know that there was some question about the enforcement, if we were to put in place a smoking policy at town facilities, but I didn't know what further discussion we needed to have on that. There was a question about cost of signage. I guess it really depends on, you know, how much we're gonna put into this. I mean, we could put up some signs at the general entrances that says, you know, respectfully, do not smoke within 20 feet, or whatever the parameters may be, but as far as enforcement?
I think most people that wouldn't be smoking there are courteous enough that they'd move if the sign says, hey, I mean, it's this day and age.
I don't think we need to go overkill with signage, but maybe just at like the primary entrance to all the facilities.
That would be probably the best. Just get some general term. I don't know what a sign's gonna look like, or the size of it, or whatever, but. Jay, you have a question?
You listed a number of open positions for firefighters.
She didn't list it. She just said there was openings in general there. There wasn't actually a number placed to that. You didn't say a number.
I believe there are two, but I will have to verify that. As for some correspondence that was received, we received an email from?
Oh, sorry, back to the, I thought, with the smoking policy. I think one of the questions we had was with staff, like employees and staff, so they would have to go off premises.
Or to their personal vehicle.
Okay.
Would that be acceptable to you?
I just, we just, I didn't know what the thought process was. I know that it's typical.
I think the biggest thing is, you know, you don't want the exposure to people entering the building, or people that might have a window open in an office, or even near a playground or a ball field.
Designated smoking area.
Right.
But they can smoke in their own vehicle, which I didn't realize.
That would be the thought process? I mean, or we could just say, none on town properties, period?
I mean, if they're in their car, but they have the windows all open, are they really standing on designated area or nothing within 30 feet of entrances? Ventilation or anything like that? I don't know. See, if they don't want it down on the ball fields, like somebody's standing up on the hill, and the wind blows out, they're just still blowing down the kids.
Which has happened.
So this is the time to outline those parameters if we want to move forward with the Safety Committee's recommendation to put one in place, more than, there is a smoking policy in place right now, and it refers to a designated area, but those designated areas are, I don't know that they're actually outlined.
Where would you think?
And that would only control the employees. It's not gonna, it's not gonna control the general public from being at an entrance. So do we address it as a standalone policy, or do we keep it contained to the personnel manual and just put the expectation out that employees?
Well, the only, you know, I don't put this as my danger things going on. I can understand that. 40 feet of the doorways that people are walking through and passing through, that they don't have to walk by, you know, I understand that, but, you know, again, I'm not.
Is you at the sporting events with people? Or are people? There is, in the parking lots, yeah.
Does a school have signage, right? Just says no smoking on it. Is that what it says?
North Borough name last weekend, and, I mean, they just have it all posted, just says, you know.
Smoke-free environment.
Yeah, smoke-free environment. But I mean, I guess my question was more for the employees that smoke, if you have a, what the policy would be for them? Do you have a recommendation?
I would say that if they're in their personal vehicle, but again, you know, it's?
They all park up over there.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Who's enforcing it anyways? It's actually just being common courtesy is what we're gonna ask them to do. And that's really what it comes down to. For common courtesy, you might smoke in your vehicles and not on town property. I mean, that's what we're gonna ask them.
So it is a smoke-free environment, and let it go at that.
Yeah. I mean, one of the things is when the, is for when they have the meetings here, there's a lot of people that smoke up front, on like, I think the, I don't know if it's AA or what group it is, whatever, but there's quite a few that are smoking right in front of the building. So there should be a sign there saying, hey, listen, this is a designated non-smoking area, and I'm sure they'll be fine with it, you know, but that's.
So there will be footage wrong with it?
I think the sign just saying the general area front is please do not be smoking in front of the building is, you know, I mean, everybody.
Or down by the parking lot. We'll just have to add the signage, probably even the beach.
I mean, I'd hate for this to become an issue over something as simple as this, that the people that would be smoking, whatever respect, that don't be smoking, you know, it's just simple, that there. So, I mean, if it addresses to be more of a situation, then I think we'd have to look at it more differently, but I hope it doesn't get to that situation. But as we'll see how things progress.
I will pull together some proposed signage for you. Dawn Farnold, the moderator, emailed this morning. It had been brought to our attention that there are a lot of illegal signs that have been placed in front of town offices in the town dump, political signs. Excuse me. Her email says, a political sign needs to state the name and address of the group party who paid for them in order for it to be legal. In general, postings are not allowed on public property unless the Board of Selectmen has granted this. Does the town have a policy allowing political signs on public property? Legal signs need to be removed by the town or the police. They should notify the person who owns the sign to come pick them up at the town office. I did also include RSA 664:17, which is the RSA on placement removal of political advertising. So there were some signs that were placed across the street. I actually just got an email from Sam Demerit from the Conservation Commission. The, the new manager of the North River Preserve, or new, I'm sorry, the new executive director for Bear Paw has not granted permission for them to be there, so she has asked that the Conservation Commission step in and remove any signs across the street here from the town office.
And if anybody's sign is removed in past precedents?
It gets placed here at the town office for people to pick up.
Exactly. They're not gonna throw away what you spent money on or anything like that. That's, we're not doing that. The signs at the dump, were they across the street from the entrance to the dump, or on the side of the?
Right, as you're pulling out right there.
Yeah, but across.
That's private property.
So as long as they have private, if they have the property owner's permission, then it should be an non-issue.
And then the only way we know is if the property owner can, calls us and lets us know. But if they don't call us, then it is what it is.
Is there other spots that we should be wearing?
Not that I, the ones that Dawn was specifically referring to, that she got contacted on, were the ones across from the recycling center in the town.
But we don't own that land, so.
Over there, right. Well, if, also, I know, Alan, you have a lot on your plate, but whoever removes those signs, if somebody could give a courtesy, or let me know, I'll reach out to whoever it is to let them know that the signs are in the office. I just don't want them to think that they're gone, or somebody did something malicious to them, or something like that. So if we have their name, just let me know. I'll figure out how to get hold of them.
The only other thing that I did not include when I was out at the last meeting was Mr. Gonzalez had requested the results from your discussion on January 22nd, so I had summarized those in correspondence to him. Those are available for him to pick up at the office as he requested. And I think I did, I printed out the information on the state's replacement. The state replacement of private wells.
Oh.
Tim had referenced it at that last meeting, so I just printed it out, so you had the information. You had talked about creating some, some standards at the local level to maybe address further discussion on this topic, if he should choose to come back in. I think that concludes my report.
Do we want to?
Yeah, somebody assessing. Next item.
Okay. We're looking for, we're at 7 o'clock right now. Seth Peters?
Yes, all set. I have some paperwork I brought. Single page for you, please. I have a 25-acre piece of property located off of Canard Road, and this is considered backland, and I'd like the Senator to behold it timbered. And I contacted the New Hampshire Forestry Department, and I talked to the local officer for this area, and she told me the state has a law that allows me to petition Selectmen down, request that you designate a road for me into one of the properties between mine and Canard Road to have access to it. The map I sent you there, do you see that yellow line on the middle? Basically, the town tax map is not correct there. It's on my land. I should have identified the land. Did you see? Do you see this? Do you see this piece right here?
Yeah, number one.
You see that line? And you told me my actual property line is where the yellow line is, not the town tax map line.
So what'd that give you for acreage?
Twenty-five acres.
Okay.
Originally, when the lot was created, it was created on a rangeway. And the rangeway was Winter Street. And I'd basically like to use that road as access to my property. It goes to, uh, Betsy Saunders property. Originally, back five, six, seven years ago, I applied to the town to put a single family home on the property. Because after I had, uh, engineer go out there, you know, he told me, I didn't know where the right of way was there. The property was left to me by my father. He bought it back in the fifties. Access is on the Winter Street Rangeway. And, uh, I went out there at that time. And you could see where there was a road that originally went out there. But, uh, she, when she purchased the property on the other side of hers, she put a load of gravel on it, blocked it. It was up to me. That road was used by the town or someone who had been maintaining. Thing to do, you know. History in the town. It's still up in the air as far as access. Again, it's what I request from you is how we, you know, I wanted to come and talk to you today about it.
You said the access is supposed to be off of Winter Street?
What's that?
You said the access is supposed to be off of Winter Street?
Yes, and Winter Street usually continues.
Across, and I'm looking at the map that you provided.
Stop see on Canard Road?
Yeah.
Used to go right straight across. Well, never, you know, I say it does, she said it didn't, but you know, uh, you could see areas where it had been timbered. I had a picture taken, uh, that I received. And cut back in the fifties. You can see the access. There's a bus out back there too. It's about a nineteen sixty bus.
You mentioned one landowner. Which property was that? Was that the one across from the Linker Street that lot number four?
That's right.
There appears to be some sort of gravel access through lot thirteen. Have you approached?
No, I haven't.
What's that? That's the tax map number?
Lot eight.
But I'm just saying there's a
Yeah.
There's an old...
Oh, tax map thirteen, yes, he comes.
You see that little line that looks like it goes to the property?
Yeah.
I thought maybe that was access two, but, um, the owner fifteen, twenty years ago put a garage. I'm sure no one used it. Are you familiar with this line or have you ever used it before?
Nope.
Backland to do timbering.
Right. And is that your intent?
Yes.
Saying the person that you contacted is in lot four? Okay.
I haven't asked for anyone's permission.
Okay.
I have talked to a couple of people about getting a right of way to it and they've all said, no, they're not interested. As I was saying, I, uh, six or seven, eight years ago, I applied to the town to put a single family home. And I was granted a priority, actually applying for private.
Okay.
And it was approved and given to me. Three weeks later, I got a letter in the mail saying that it consented. So it was considered that it wasn't a legal right of way because of the non-use of Winter Street through that section of town. Pretty disappointed about that.
So currently this parcel has no needed right of way written on it?
It's, it's, uh, the rangeway. Are you familiar with the rangeways?
That was seventeen hundreds on that.
Sixty hundreds. I've sent some surveyors in New Hampshire. You know, lines all throughout the state, like Route four is a rangeway. This road out here is probably a rangeway. They were actually put in and used. And, you know, a lot of, I'm sure there's a lot of other lots in Nottingham that were created that way. But, you know, the roads were put in. This particular road, I think it was put in back, you know, in the seventeen or eighteen hundreds, but it was stopped for some reason and, uh, this is the access to my property. Basically, that's what the engineer told me, surveyor, licensed surveyor in New Hampshire. Told me it was, uh, that would be the road to use. Rangeways, it's drawn.
Are you seeing there's a garage right in the middle of it now?
Huh?
You're seeing there's a garage right in the middle of it now?
No, I say there's a load of gravel that was put in the middle of it so that no one could use the
Okay. I heard that part and then you're talking about a garage.
There's a little squiggly line. I mean, on the other side of the property that looks like it goes to the property.
That'd be lot eight, uh, tax map thirteen.
So can I drill you with a bunch of questions? Can I ask you a bunch of questions? Since you, I mean, again, when was lot, when were the subdivision of lots? Two, three, four, four, one, or, you know, lot eight, when were these subdivisions done? Are these, do you, do you have records of those? Or when they were sold or when they were actually?
Is it anything with a front of John Canard?
I think they were all joined together.
One time everything was all joined, but the way these things are cut. There's no way the subdivision would be done like this in this present day and age. So was this done in the sixties? Was this done on a planning board? They just cut out lots and said this. You know, at that time, my question is why wasn't, um, whoever owned lot fifteen before your
Yes, she bought it.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't that person of there? You know, 'cause I don't know when winter lot or Winter Street was ever stopped using or when was the last time it was actually publicly used. Could that have been in eighteen fifty? Could that have been before the Civil War? I mean, I have no idea.
Probably.
So, I mean...
If it had ever been used at all, then I have the right to use it. It's up to me to prove.
But that's a problem. Absolutely.
Now, if you go out past the yellow lines heading straight up, there's a huge swamp out there.
Oh, yeah.
There's actually a brick, a stone causeway built across that swamp. Should see the stones and it's like people can get through there probably with a wagon or something.
Very nice. You're just looking the log in.
Looking the log. Need access to the property. I have the right to petition the board. Does she have the right to grant the, uh, access to it through where we, or you choose? Know with a reason to make it feasible to be a law, be logged. I haven't really brought loggers out there yet to determine where they think the best place would be. I don't know how you go about doing this, so I was hoping, I just wanted to talk to the board today, bring it to your attention, and I'd like to move forward with this. Like, uh, I think, um, are you the secretary for the plan or the secretary?
Yes, I, yeah.
Did you end up talking to the forester?
Um, I did not. I called her on, I think we played phone tag on the ninth and then I missed her last week.
She said she'd be glad to talk to you.
And you, you've read RSA two, three, one, colon forty petition?
Yes.
Okay.
Or the rest of two, three, one.
Four, one or?
They're just saying there's another part, there's an appeal first. If the person, like we say, sure, you can take a right of way of lot four and then whoever that is decides, no, I don't like that, then there's another process for that. It seems like to me that we would want to either have look at where would be an acceptable area to do it, but to see if there was anybody in lot eight or two or three or four that would be willing.
Developed.
Uh-huh.
Undeveloped.
Either undeveloped or willing to entertain some sort of access across, across their property before we just start cutting a piece off and saying, sure. Seems like a little bit of footwork on your part. You're like, well, I've asked these people, I own the property in the back, but you'd be willing to pay them some sort of cost, maybe it's a garage, wants a lot of the driveway, you guys could work this out, I don't know. But just coming in here, me on the cake, cut this liver off for me. I know, by the way, it goes way over here behind lot four, which we would have to... Our tax map doesn't show that. It shows us you have a fifteen acre parcel only behind lot two.
Yeah, which is, uh, this is the whole tax map. Years ago.
Right, but I think there's going to be a little bit more work done before you say, well, I actually own twenty-five acres, let's cut this off and then we cut a road through. Like, there's a lot of questions here for you.
Yeah, and the fact of by us granting this, we're taking away something.
Yeah.
And we might be granting him something, but we're taking away something too from somebody.
Well, I have to reimburse the people for, if I had to cut down trees or things like that, absolutely.
Right, yeah, but so you're going to have to figure out that, what's the reimbursement cost?
Cost to timber, have a, have a forester, yeah.
But what if they say, you know, for their potential value, they say to do this, it's fifty thousand dollars of compensation they're looking for.
Well, I think that's where the documents stop in and the determination of what the owners are, to a degree. You know, with the
Or that we, or every tier that we're willing to grant you access to do this. Because we don't have to, we have to speak aside with the others. Homeowner of the land. I think the first thing is to go out and look and see what's, what's any of this. I'm just bringing up subject, you know. While he's sitting here in front of us, we can Right. Talk about as much as we can so that we can put as much on the table for you to know.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I'd rather see you know the negative and the positive and just not think, I don't want you walking out here tonight thinking, well, I think they're just going to Right, is that?
Absolutely. I think the intent of the state though, to enable Selectmen to be able to do this is because of, most property owners are not going to want to. So by that means, most property would never be able to be timbered. So I think, and because of that, they created this law so that you, board, has the ability to grant relief to people like myself. Otherwise, this law wouldn't even exist.
Right.
We could all go.
Within reason naturally.
Yeah, within reason.
Can you repeat the RSA, please?
The what?
The RSA is?
RSA three, two thirty-one.
I mean, would you be comfortable reaching out to the property owners that?
I can try, yeah.
And to see if they'd be willing to allow you access, not a right of way?
I don't think lot four was, because she's fought me tooth and nail. She's the one that contacted the town and said that, you know, hired a lawyer to fight it and I didn't think it was fair to myself. So I know she's not going to grant me that.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And that's the, um, Winter Street. Goes through her property. Now, the rangeway. And, uh, because it wasn't used, she doesn't want to have anyone use that rangeway. I don't think it's fair.
I mean, even if we were to look how that road works and works.
It would pretty much go straight back from Winter Street across the street from Winter Street.
Correct. But that doesn't end up on your property.
That might not.
It does end up on my property. According to the interstate, uh, the engineer, I had to go out there and do metro preliminary work on it. He said that's why my property line, they didn't create a lot like that that didn't have frontage. The frontage was on Winter Street. Winter Street used to go all the way up through to Route four. If you go back far enough into the books up in Concord, do the research on it, like sixteen hundreds or whatever, there's a map that actually shows, uh, the rangeway. It actually shows those, my property has been two, three, like two lots. And other lots up there have been all stripped off, divided. And since then, they've been joined.
Because here too, like lot ten is showing a forty-one acres. And your lot's showing a fifteen, but you're saying yours is twenty-five, so that means lot ten is thirty-one acres, like there's just a ten acre gap here too that I'm kind of confused.
Yeah.
How?
Tax maps are never accurate.
No. Someone's got to bring it up.
Survey to update it.
Yeah, I think there's a few other steps to that. And you said you've only talked to the individual lot four. You have not a good relationship with that person, but you have not talked to lot two or three or the other tax map lot eight?
Those are the two lots, uh, you're talking, I can't see in these glasses, those numbers are so small.
Did the little ones next to the left?
Um, there's houses right in the middle of those. And it would really impact those two, those two properties. It's not going to impact four that much.
And then how about lot eight? The one that's further to the left? Like the access road, you said there's a barn there or a garage?
Yeah. That could be a possibility. And they're along the property line.
Right.
Yeah. Instead of where that low squiggly road is.
See, I mean, I, I know I would feel more comfortable rather than just granting access is if you maybe reach out to the property owner to see if they'd be willing to provide you access.
And come back and say if they deny it?
Yeah, I mean, that's my opinion. I don't know how you guys.
Right, even lot ten, I don't know what's there. I mean, that's a big forty-one acre piece.
The one with the number thirteen is on?
No. Going back on this side.
The one that you're moving, that you said your
Yeah. Property line. You can see there's quite a distance, his road probably is way off.
Right.
Yeah, but it probably isn't as far as it looks on the map.
Yeah. Saint Jean owns that property.
If he agreed and it was that would make sense to me. Find somebody that was willing to let you use their property for landing.
I'd prefer to actually use Winter Street.
I know you would.
Yes. Because it was, you know, the right of the property, that was its access point.
Yeah, but you know, now again, I have a, I have a problem with that because all these lots were created that went right through there. At the time of these lots not existed.
The what?
When that lot, when the subdivision was created, you're saying Winter Street obviously didn't exist at the time or?
Yeah.
Or they would have drawn a property line, using Winter Street as a property line, saying, this is the access because the road's there.
It's just like that.
So that was not even considered when this was done.
It's a cow path.
Right. And one of the things too is, again, under these RSAs, when you read them here, the condition of using this lot would only be for the fact of timbering. And then it shut off.
Unless there's other ways, you know. But rules and zoning regulations could change on the road, but yes, as of right now, yes.
Would you want that additional information from the surveyor to try to correct this?
Yes, we would need a survey in order to correct the tax map. There has to be, I mean, that's the only way that you
So if you have that information, you said it existed the survey, if you want the tax map corrected, which would provide, right now, with the information we have shows like lot four wouldn't be viable for us anyway because it doesn't go there. We've got to get that fixed.
And I'd like to know more history on your particular lot, because what, what amazes me is you got one side that's a perfect, nice straight line, and then you have another side that is
Not.
I think that was surveyed.
Right.
That was surveyed by the, uh, do you see where the number thirteen is?
Probably follows the stone wall.
Yeah, it does. There's a stone wall.
Is there a stone wall there?
Yes, there is.
Okay, thank you. That gives a good explanation of why it looks the way it does.
I don't think there is a stone wall on the other side. But I know the, uh, the thirteen, that block was surveyed.
Right.
Say they have the distances and all that different. Again, I wanted to bring it to your attention.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I can talk to my engineer. And I'll go out there and talk to some of the neighbors and see what they say and, uh, you can revisit it, you know, maybe a month or so.
Yeah, that sounds
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Yep.
This is not something I have to do tomorrow, but I just wanted to get the wheels going around.
Been waiting 70 years now, right? You've been waiting 70 years, so...
Long time. Trees are growing.
Right. Get more valuable. Kinda timbers on it.
Fine.
Again, you can look into it too if you want. For, James, a forest warden.
Listen, I have, I have another question. I'm just gonna bring it up, just ask it for the general notice. Have you ever thought of actually selling this land?
I have.
To the Nottingham Conservation? And putting it in conservation? Sure, they buy land all over the town.
They do. Well, they're happy to sell it.
I mean, you might wanna ask them to see what they are.
The neighbors. There's one neighbor. She offered $5,000.
Sorry. You might wanna see, uh, contact the Nottingham Conservation, uh, because they can use funding from Bear Paw, they can use funding from other ways, and they might actually have a formula to get per acre, uh, and they have money that is given to them, um, due to people paying impact, um, not impact fees, sorry.
Then use change?
Yeah. Current use tax, whatever they get, they have money.
Who is this? What do we...
Conservation Commission, Nottingham. So, you might wanna see them because, uh, depending what, because the land behind it, that 29, uh, 512, that big parcel right there?
Yes.
That land is in conservation now due to that cul-de-sac that's over there.
You're talking about where that swamp is?
Yeah. So, that's, what they like to do is they like to keep big parcels and combine it with other big parcels in order to keep the parcels big and open. So, you might wanna see, they might give you a much better per acre cost, you know?
Sure.
And that might, if it's more money than you're gonna get from them than you are from timbering, maybe you'd like to consider that. But they do buy land, and they've bought quite a bit of, you know, over the course of the years in the town, and this might be something, since there's land around it that is conservation, that they could, you know, secure more. Just trying to give you as many avenues as, you know, to before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Uh, do we wanna move on to the voter's guide, general business?
Do we wanna do the municipal assessment data certificate? Do that?
Oh, that's, yeah, yeah, okay, sorry, my bad. Uh, Department of, uh, State of Hampshire Department of Revenue and Administrations sent the town of Nottingham to the office selectman. Uh, what this is, it's about the median ratio for real property in Nottingham for the tax year of 2003. Uh, what they base that was to be as...
Twenty-three.
Excuse me, at 23, sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, to be at 68.6 percent. Uh, so, every five years, the town goes around, um, we hire Avatar, and they do a reassessment of all the properties in town, uh, to meet what the present market value is, to give a fair assessment, uh, for bases on what tax rates are gonna be set at, based upon house values. And so, where they sit right now is that they're 60 percent. We are coming up to our, in 2025, will be our reassessment. So, they're basically letting us know where we sit now. Um, so, that's starting next year, they'll, they will be starting the reevaluation. But this is basically to tell us where we stand now so that it's not a shocker, I take it, right?
In comparison to the market values.
In comparison to market values. It was 68.6 percent. So, they're basically calling all the houses in town 30 percent.
Underassessed.
Underassessed, from what they think the current market value is. And if you watch the prices of what we're assessed at to what they're selling at, it's probably even larger than 30 percent in some cases, so... Uh, this was into a form, this came from, uh, Sam Green, uh, the director. Am I missing anything on this, Ellen? Is there anything else I should be adding to this?
Nope. The only other thing that you have to do as part of this process is sign what they call the pink form, and it notifies the Department of Revenue where we're at in the revale cycle. So, we, we're not doing anything in 2024. Um, 2025 will be the town wide revaluation, but you just need to sign that form annually. Yes, that's the one.
So, for residents in Nottingham to know, that when they can reassess us, the values of your homes will be going up, but that usually always brings the tax rate down, so we should hopefully stay at a roughly same, uh, what you're paying. But we'll see what happens. Review of action items from the last meeting. Go in order. We already talked about, uh, the well, um, policy reviews.
The smoking policy.
Yeah, we talked about the smoking policy in the safety manual.
Uh, did Mr. Reed send us that paperwork?
He did not.
Okay.
Um, so, I was going to, I watched the meeting, and I know that there was a request for the question that was posed to the attorney, which I can provide. It was, um, more or less just forwarding the email that he had originally sent to the board. The question is, is whether or not you wanna release the attorney's response.
For the purpose of being okay for us to use impact fees for the purpose of the well?
Correct.
Just to be clear, mentioning, are you looking for a vote from us to say yes, release it to him or not?
I, I mean, it's, it's at your discretion as to whether or not you want to take attorney-client privilege and make it part of the public record. I think in this case, I, I think it will help better, um, answer his questions.
I agree.
Yeah, okay.
Do you need a vote for that?
We should probably do one, just to be official.
I'd say we release the confidential attorney-client privileged communication from often Hatfield for the impact fees dated January 23rd, 2024.
In regards to the...
Impact fees.
In regards to the well, or in terms of what we're actually releasing to the well at Marston.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye, Steve Walsh.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim Gabriel.
Aye, Mr. Warren.
I'll be sure to forward that to him.
Has everybody had a chance to go over and read? Ellen, these are, I read them today. Thank you for doing this.
Hopefully, we read the second version. I don't know what happened with the first one. It was like a jigsaw puzzle.
I guess it's a copy paste, though.
It did copy and paste, though.
Oh, you didn't, okay. It looked like you, like, cut and copied, but it didn't cut.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really know what happened there.
So, what we're talking about right now, for people, just for clarification, is this is the voter's guide, uh, this we, uh, put on the website. And what this is, it's, uh, to go over, it lists, um, all the, who's running for the board members, uh, their names and what positions they're running for. Then it actually will go through the Warren articles, um, as what were listed during the deliberation. Um, so, basically, there's also comment below, which we list on the website, explaining for people that weren't at the deliberation center, uh, session, what the Warren article interprets. Uh, and this is, you know, our interpretation of the Warren article. This is not up for discussion of whether the public feels like we worded it wrong. We'll be clear about that. This is our interpretation of what we read the Warren article to be and what we're presenting. Um, so, this will be posted. Uh, but it does also say in there all the recommendations, everything that was done, you know, select board recommendations, it was five, nothing, budget recommendations, you know, 11, nothing, or in some cases, it was, you know, the board, select board recommended, I think, five, nothing, the appropriation, uh, the budget committee does not recommend this appropriation, six, five. So, those are all listed, but what we're just writing on the bottom of it is an excerpt of what we, of what, yes, and this has been done for many years. So, we're not reinventing the wheel here, we're just putting it up. What we're deciding tonight is, as we read over this as a board, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to discuss between us on these articles and what the captions read, not changing the articles, but on what the caption reads that we're presenting to the public, if we feel like that's the best way to represent it. That's what we're discussing now.
And all the amendments were put in?
Yes. So, there were some minor amendments that were made at, um, town deliberative session. Article 12 was a wording, uh, changed from 105,000 to 150,000, as the Warren article was supposed to reflect. Article 17, the wording was changed by Dan Decker to request permission to remove suspicious materials in regard to, um, the courtesy inspections of boats at, the boat launch at Fundy Boat Ramp in Potokaway State Park. And then, Article 21, contingency upon approval of the town's engineering firm for the acceptance of Maple Ridge Road. So, those were all added into this voter's guide and all those.
Anything I see here, Article 19, it doesn't have the vote on it?
There was no, it's not a tax impact, so the budget committee and select board didn't vote on it.
Okay. And for anybody that questions, Article 19 was the all veterans tax credit of the 750, uh, to credit all honorably discharged veterans that qualified under the, uh, requirements as of April 1st of 2023. I just wanna stick and just go over, I read it when I was at work, so it's, there's a couple of things as well.
Thank you for doing that, Ellen.
Thank you for reviewing it. Um, do you have anything else that you want to see? Unless, I know, uh, just looking through some of the historical ones, at one point, we actually put in, like, a pie chart that showed the potential tax impact.
Even if all articles pass?
I can include as little or as much information as you would like. I tried to, um, hyperlink to different areas that can be found throughout the town's website on Playa's efforts, the invasive species presentation that was presented to you as a board in November, I linked to that. I linked to where people can look at the MS 737 and all the Warren articles, the default budget.
I think it's good.
I know we've had discussions in the past about stuff like that.
What do you think on the pie chart?
Yeah, what would the pie chart look like?
Sometimes it can just be confusing while you're looking at it.
It can be.
I didn't bring an example with me, so...
Well, I mean, could there be an expert that says potential that if all Warren articles passed, X amount of dollars is gonna be based on the tax rate?
We can put that out there, but the only caveat to that would be that it would be based on the prior year's assessed value, because we don't set, you don't finalize your assessed values through town until September 1st.
All right, we'll, I'll text you, but the dollars, like, it's $3.
Right, and that's, that's how we've done the calculation. We've done it based on the prior year.
Add $3, add 1 cent, add, just go through that and all, change up whatever comes to and says if all articles passed.
This is the proposed tax impact.
That way, people know where if they, you know, if they read that, then they can start deciding on themselves if they wanna cut the 3 cents off here, the 5 cents, or the dollar issue, or whatever one.
Do it based on, like, an average home value to 300,000 or 200,000 or whatever.
I think it just means the estimated tax impact would be... Yeah. The total, it might end up how the first... Four, all, 50 cents or whatever comes out to you. If all articles pass.
Okay.
This is what the number, just like that, and then people can actually minus from there what the numbers are projected on here for the impact. Trying to put it as simple and black and white. Well, that's the way I wanna read it and look at it.
So, maybe put that at the beginning, just before Article 2, when we get into the operating budget? I can have that in the...
You just put it at the end.
Put it at the end.
Yeah, after all of them. Kind of summary, better than all this passed.
All right, I will get that updated and...
Uh, for Mr. Peters, since he left before, we gave him a month. Do you want to tentatively schedule him on a month from now? Just put him in as a time slot. I'm just, that's how the planning board would, would just do on a case similar to this, as we just planned it out, since it's basically, it's gonna be our review time and what, what information that he's bringing towards us, you know, we're not really doing anything. It's more of as much information he's gonna bring towards us.
Yeah.
So...
March 18th, thank you.
And we are done with all that, right? All right, so, anything more towards what we discussed right now before I open this up?
Um, just one more thing. So, a couple of weeks ago, I toured the, um, Town Beach property with the owners over there that have had some trespassers. I'm gonna add that to our agenda next time. Just gotta check, we had some signs updated last week. We're looking forward to clarify that that property is still closed during this time of year, because they've had a lot of trespassers.
Do you want that on the next meeting, public, or is it a non-public portion we gotta get into?
No, I think public, because we get a, I think we just have to figure out how we're gonna, how we're gonna proceed with keeping the beach open, and that's the possibility.
Gotcha.
So, the next meeting is March 4th, which will be the week before voting.
Good?
Yep.
All right, this portion of the meeting, uh, since we are approaching the end of our normally scheduled business, we open this private public comment. Um, so, we will allow a, some time right now for a public before we are going into non-public, which we will be going into that. And then after we go into non-public, when we finish non-public, we will be closing our non-public session, and then we will automatically adjourn the tonight's meeting. adjourn the tonight's meeting.
Do we have a timeline?
Depends on where we're going with the conversation. Is this a public question for the board, or is this a statement you're making?
I think that would be yes. I, 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 please, no followers. Okay. I got a question for the board. Is there a written policy for the public to submit a procedure and a policy, submit complaints?
To just general town complaints?
Absolutely, yes.
About individual personnel or about just town procedure?
Could be either. Is there a policy and a procedure for submitting a complaint?
I think we can go to the town administrator.
There is a, um, there is a complete policy, complaint policy in place.
Is that for employees or is that for?
No, it's just general complaints.
Just general.
And where is that located?
Um, I would have to look to see if it's on the town's website, but if not, I can give you a copy of it.
I haven't been, I haven't been able to find it. Okay, and, and the following question is, are you, are you familiar with that policy or are we going to be? Does it contain an accounting or a recording portion of it that someone keeps track of the complaints and the adjudication process of those complaints?
The process is, I don't have it here in front of me to reference, but normally all complaints um, they're disseminated to the particular department that it relates to, to that department head for them to address. And then there's supposed to be a response generated based on the complaint as to where it escalates from there, whether it comes up to administration, all the way up to the board of selectmen, or it, it really depends on the subject matter.
Is there a closeout associated with it? Does the complaint get a confirmation that the complaint is closed and this is the resolution?
There should be, yes.
Should be, yes. Do you, is there, okay, is there a confirmation?
Here you go. We just had one, you saw, the complaint against the town for the well. Uh, that was on for the oversalting. We actually sent him a letter, you know, he came in front of the board, explained his situation to us. We passed a verdict on and we emailed him a response. So that is closed. Is that how that works?
Okay, I'll stand by for receipt of this because, um.
I mean, that's, we didn't actually, we consider it closed now.
Right.
From where we decided.
I guess it depends on that, it depends a lot on the subject matter too, because if it is personnel related, then normally those matters are addressed in non-public session, they're dealt with the employee, and then there isn't, there isn't normally a public disclosure for findings or outcomes that are publicized at that point, so, um. But if it's, if it's a general complaint, then yes, there should be, it should be forwarded off to the department.
So if somebody's complaining about their road not being graded or not being maintained properly, that obviously gets filed for you, then it gets filed to the highway department. And then there should be some record after the highway department. But we should have some recollection, uh, recollection of it being addressed by them.
Yeah, there is, yeah, so like the roads are probably the most significant complaints volume wise that come in on a regular basis, so we actually have a spreadsheet where we track them in the office as to when the item was addressed.
But it never comes back to us though.
And it lives probably for eternity someplace.
Well, it's an ongoing spreadsheet.
Right.
But, yeah, I, there probably are some processes that need to be cleaned up on other items, so.
Is that spreadsheet available to the public?
For the roads?
Or for everything?
Yes, yep.
I, I don't have a spreadsheet for everything that comes in. Uh, we do have one in particular for the roads, just because, like I said, the volume.
That might be something for us to address as a future, since it's never been, probably in my time here, addressed to us as being an issue, but.
And I, I want to be clear, the complaint is informed of the adjudication of the complaint, correct? That means the findings, the results, the complaint gets, you know, say, gets, gets a report or gets a confirmation that it's valid, it's not valid, or what corrective actions are going to be taken, is that correct?
There should be, yes.
Should be.
Whether it comes from the department head or follow-up.
Come through you?
Um, initially they come into the town office and like I said, they're usually passed off to the department in which it applies.
Do you track them through the department head?
And again, you are asking Ellen under her first year of things.
If this, is this process just happened to started this year, sir?
Again, I've never known of the process of how we handled it, because this never came to our attention to be part of the process, so this is one thing where I'm happy that you're here.
Yep, thank you, me too.
Telling this to us so that, you know, down the road, we can actually figure a better process for handling this and having a record of it. But it's never, in my time here, have been addressed as an issue of where people's complaints, you know, as valid as they are for what particular they are, about us not taking care of them, you know, if it's a road issue, or if it's somebody's mailbox that got hit by the highway department or, you know.
Is there a form associated with it, so you know it's a complaint?
There is a standard form, those are found right in the town office, and I will have to check the website. I think that they were posted there at some point, but I'll have to look. I know we have them right on the front counter, just in case somebody comes in with a complaint, then we can at least take down the, the information and when it was received right then and there.
Okay.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be on a prescribed form, it should just be in writing.
Are emails acceptable writing?
I believe so. I've accepted complaints by email before.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just state your name for the record.
Sure. Linda Prashadny, sixteen Camelot Court. Linda Prashadny? You're welcome. Try spelling that one. Have fun. Um, so, I just have a number of unrelated questions, I guess. So there's a warrant article about forty thousand dollars to explore a new police department. So I just have a couple of thoughts to share with you. I don't need any comment unless you want to. So if that warrant article does not pass, the one thing that the police chief has expressed to me, just in a hallway conversation, is that she needs a safe exit pass in case they need to make an emergency call to someone, and she says it's uncomfortable kind of here, because she's got to make sure that when they're pulling out, that they don't run somebody over that's going to their car, or an employee, or children who are coming to the gym. So I understand, and I don't know for sure, so you guys can tell me, is there a road that used to be behind the community center that went to some other place? It was an old town road that was closed down and maybe like five or six years ago is what I heard, or?
No.
Hundreds of years ago? I don't know. Okay.
Not that it would be usable.
Okay.
Right. The trail that you see out back, I believe, is where it went over to it. Comes out on McCullough Street.
Right.
But somebody has a house out there now, so.
So there's no exit to that road, kind of like that other gentleman who was sitting here. Okay. So the thought was that if there was an old town road that could just be utilized for police department to go out that way instead of going out to one fifty-two? Just a thought. Okay. So then if the warrant article passes, have we thought about, again, the police department wants just an easy access to a road so that they can make emergency calls quickly? Just taking the old fire department location and turning it into a police department? I mean, tear it down or whatever you want to do, but.
So the forty thousand, I mean, they, they could look at that building, it's to kind of explore different options, the when the fire department was built, they had the part for proposed expansion to see, is that usable? That, and they just give you like a, a quick snapshot, and then if, if we choose a path, then the next portion would be to create actual engineering documents that could be used, you know, to, to put all the, so they would look, it's more like site planning and some basic stuff. They, they will probably look at it, it is a town asset, but is it the best place? You know, it didn't work for the fire department, but those vehicles were definitely a lot heavier, so maybe it could, but it's small, maybe you could double it, who knows?
Right.
That's what the, the base thing will just take into what the police department needs are now, but try to expand it out a few years.
Yeah. So that was just a thought, that if, that, because that's in the center of town, and then they would have quick access to one fifty-two, so.
Yep.
Just a thought. Okay. New topic. What type of public official bonds do all of you carry?
What? I don't.
Maybe insurance bonds, like for us, is that what you're?
Yeah, surety bonds. All public officials in the state of New Hampshire are supposed to have surety bonds.
There is one, covering public officials, specific public officials. I will have, I can get you a copy, Linda, I don't, they wouldn't have knowledge to it. It's something that the town ensures through our insurer, Primex.
So the individual, so every individual should have their own surety bond? And?
It's, it's not every individual, it's the public official positions.
Correct. So all four of these gentlemen and yourself should all have a surety bond?
I'm not a public official, I'm an employee of the town.
You're a town official that has access to money, so yes.
I do not have access to money.
Okay, so are you saying that anything?
I am not a signer on an account. I don't have authority to disperse all the requests come through the board of selectmen, and the treasurer assigns all the checks. So I have, I have access to view bank statements, but other than that, I have no financial control over anything with the town.
Okay. So like you're tax collector, et cetera?
Tax collectors is another one that is.
So it's one bond for anyone who must have one?
Public officials, correct.
Okay. Do you know what the max, what the, what the amount of that bond is?
I don't have that information with me tonight, I can get it for you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you, okay, so because it's, so what you're saying, it's one surety bond for the town, the appropriate people in the town? Okay. So there's a the bond would have certain names on it or certain positions on it?
Positions.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Another, another topic. Does the, does Nottingham, Nottingham have a health department?
Our code enforcement.
Okay.
He holds the position of health officer, which every town has a board of health, and the selectmen are ultimately your board of health, and unless they assign a health officer for the town, which in this case, our code enforcement officer Dale, Dale Sylvia holds that position.
Okay. So I saw on the website that Dale is the building code and health inspector. So what kind of qualifications does he have to be a health inspector? Or to be the head of the health department of Nottingham? Do we know?
I'll talk ahead, no. I'm, I'm not prepared to this question, this is out of the blue, so I mean, we can probably find you.
Yeah, you're right, these are out of the blue. I just keep reading stuff and it's like, oh, that's interesting.
No one's ever asked that question to me, so I'm sure we can find out.
And you're welcome to email these questions in advance so we can be prepared to answer them during a meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, let's see. Okay, so regarding the highway and streets question, um, warrant article, I think this year we're asking for five hundred thousand. Some of it's coming from a, a budget, and then the other is going to be taxable, okay? So in two thousand twenty-three, the warrant article number eleven was for forty thousand dollars and, four hundred thousand dollars, and it was approved based on what I read in the, on the website. So in the two thousand twenty-three budget, only two hundred thousand was put in that code, forty-three twelve. What happened to the other two hundred thousand? There was a warrant article, I believe, and I could be wrong, my, my numbers could be wrong.
I think she's talking about the road reconstruction, the subcontracted portion. It was three hundred thousand originally in the operating budget, three hundred thousand by warrant article. Last year it shifted so that it was two hundred thousand in operating budget, four hundred thousand in warrant article this year, where a hundred thousand operating budget, five hundred thousand warrant article.
Right.
Right. So I'm just wondering, the tax, the taxpayers approved a warrant article for four hundred thousand dollars.
For last year.
For last year. But that wasn't what the budget was, and like it didn't get added to, is that a separate fund?
Two hundred thousand was the budget line item, so total was six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand altogether.
Two hundred out of the budget, which is under that four twelve is what you're saying, the warrant one, I don't think it's physically added into the four twelve line, it gets held as.
So is that somewhere else in the budget?
Yeah, I don't know if it gets put, yes.
Yeah, the warrant articles are listed separately, they're not part of the operating budget.
Okay, thank you. That explains why there was such a discrepancy. So it looks like that we didn't spend the two hundred thousand last year.
Not all of it, correct.
Okay. Do we have a reason why we didn't spend it? If we're asking for more money this year?
Yeah, I think we, we had talked about that in one of the earlier meetings, but, um, just based on how, how much it rained, the projects got pushed out, so not as many projects got done or planned. And not having a full-time highway director throughout the summer, kind of limited on, so we had stuff at the beginning, and we couldn't really like create any new projects throughout the year, so they got, I mean, what, they were working on Deerfield Road.
It was October.
Yeah, it was like really cold in October. So now, the money that didn't get spent, we voted approved, I don't know how to, encumbered. Some money is going to be held into this budget year, so that we are still going to try to use all of that money to get, we have quite a significant plate of projects to try to get done this year.
Okay, so in two thousand twenty-three, would you have spent the two hundred thousand in the operating budget before you touched the four hundred thousand from the warrant article?
We were going to spend it all.
No, no, from last year, two thousand twenty-three. Did you, were, was your intent to spend the two hundred thousand in the operating budget before you touched the four hundred thousand that was from the warrant article?
I don't think.
Oh, you were talking about which way we were going to spend it, because I mean, the intent was to spend all six hundred thousand dollars.
Right, right, right. So, so did you only spend a portion of the two hundred thousand and none of the four hundred thousand? Like, it's not transparent to us.
I spent the full two hundred from the operating budget, and then the warrant article, because we're able to encumber that into this year, we didn't spend all of that.
So it'd be three.
So a portion of that's going to carry forward for use, because we have it contracted with the paving company to complete additional projects that didn't get done in two thousand twenty-three. So those funds have just been kind of set aside to be able to do that in addition to the additional six hundred thousand that we're looking to get approved in two thousand twenty-four for a different set of projects.
Okay, so do you have some way of knowing how much of the six hundred thousand from last year was spent?
We can provide you an accounting of that.
Is it in the annual statement or whatever was on the website this week?
It would be in the annual report.
It, yeah, it will be in the annual report, and it'll also be, so our financial statements haven't been audited yet. That process will take place in April, so we're working off preliminary year-end figures. But we can, we can definitely pull that information together.
Because I think when I was looking at the annual report that's on the website, that it showed that there was probably less than a hundred thousand of that two hundred thousand that was spent, if I looked at the right numbers. So I was just wondering, like, how much you really spent, but, okay. So you're anticipating this year, you're going to spend more than the six hundred thousand that you're budgeting for this year, because you're carrying over quite a bit, it appears, from last year, so potentially.
It was approximately one thirty or one forty, I think.
Okay.
Baby project goes really quick.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I think one other question. Regarding the bridge replacement project, so the police department chief, well, the police chief, was concerned or is concerned about the fact that she's going to have her people over on this side of the bridge, but a call might be for this other side of the bridge. And I asked, well, can't you just for that thirty days post somebody on both sides of the bridge? And she says that would take overtime. So a suggestion would be with that unreserved fund that you have of two point six million or whatever, if she needs overtime, can it be potentially approved using that carryover fund from previous years of unpaid?
Not without a, um, special meeting.
Because this is part of the operating budget.
And this project is, will be in our two thousand twenty-five year. This is not going to be happening next year.
Right.
So there is actually, what?
This year. It will not happen in two thousand twenty-four.
Twenty-four, right. It'll be twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
So there is time for her to budget for that or to find resources probably to, if that, if that's, if that is the way that she plans to handle it. Again, nothing's said, so we have, there's no, no plan yet, because we haven't had.
So potentially people, board of selectmen or whomever would be willing to. budget money for her to pay overtime if that's what she needs to do, having.
If we can get the money from the state, that's the way we want to do it, instead of taking out our money.
That's what I suggested to her too, and she's like, they won't do that, but anyways, okay.
Again, that's something where, again, we haven't got to that, that plan yet, because the official date hasn't started, nothing that's, I mean, the state's moving forward with it, but.
Yeah.
They gave us a preliminary, but they're also debating, you know, they want to do it during the summer when there's no school, but is that thirty days? Is that going to be July? Will that be August? We don't.
Right, right.
We don't know, will it be the half of August to the September fifteenth, right before school starts, or are we?
So I would just hope that everybody could be creative so that she can get what she needs on both sides and not, from her standpoint, you know, impact the citizens of this town, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, being eight o'clock, we are going to close up, um, the public comment section, and we are going to move into our non-public session. Uh, per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, two, uh, A, B, and I. Wait a second.
L.
Oh, L, sorry.
Bye-bye.
L. Uh, we got a motion for John Warren. Second, all in favor? Roll call.
Hi, Steve Welch.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Tim Gabriel.
Hi, Asher.
Good night Nottingham, and again, we will be recessing this meeting right after we come out of non-public.